Trustee Akis, if we can have you unmute yourself, please. I saw her in the meeting for a second. Yeah, she is in, but I can't get her to unmute.
Oh, I see her. Is she muted?
I do see her as muted. I've blotted for her mute herself. Trustee, I guess if you could hear us, if you could just press, I believe it is star six, yeah, to unmute yourself.
There you go.
Okay, perfect.
Oh.
So, President Heinz.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, here you, Trustee Akis, thank you. Okay, thank you. Um, so, we will go ahead and convene our open session procedure of business with call to order. Uh, maybe we have the roll call and quorum establishment. And this. I'm sorry. I just want to announce it's for our Tuesday, October 7th, 2020.
Trustee Benz.
Benz present.
Trustee Akis.
Present.
Trustee Heinz.
Heinz present.
Trustee La French.
La French present.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner present.
And the time is 5:34 PM.
Thank you. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. Thank you. Item two, agenda. Any proposed additions, deletions, or adjustments in order of business?
Madam President, we do not have any.
Thank you.
Madam President, this is Ms. Akis. Would it be, couldn't we at this time do a moment of silence for Dr. Ted Vick?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Trustee Akis, for that.
Thank you, thank you.
And item 202, adoption of the agenda. Do we have a motion to?
I motion, Trustee Akis.
Is there a second?
Trustee Turner, second.
If there is no discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee Akis.
Aye.
Trustee Heinz.
Aye.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Motion carries five zero. Um, moving to item, public testimony, our public comment period for open session items only. Do we have any audience members or ADPA or CSEA representatives? Chris?
Yes, Madam President, we have Jennifer Radar speaking on behalf of ADTA.
Okay.
Ms. Radar, when you're ready, please unmute yourself. Ms. Radar.
So sorry, thank you.
Wait, thank you.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Dr. Mitchell, members of the Cabinet, Madam President and trustees. Tonight, I'd like to express our collective appreciation of Dr. Mitchell and his plans to limit COVID exposure on our campuses to help slow the spread amongst staff. As our entire area is still classified as in the widespread purple tier, we need to exercise caution and discretion to minimize contagion among our staff, students, and parents. None of us wants this to go on longer than it needs to, and we are all anxiously awaiting the changes in classification that would mean a safe reopening of our schools. We are also very appreciative of the monthly communication you employ with our leadership, Dr. Mitchell, and the transparency with which the administration is working. You have exhibited a sincere willingness to hear our concerns and ideas about future reopening. Our Professional Development Day had a great turnout and was a great success, so thanks to Dr. Williams for organizing and arranging that. I've heard numerous positive remarks about the good information and help that was shared as we are all working under conditions that none of us could have ever imagined. On the district website is a wonderful resource for staff, parents, and students put together by Beth Bartholomew, the Virtual Wellness Center. I had the opportunity to explore some of the wonderful resources provided, and I'm happy to report that it is an extremely imaginative and sensitive support. There's a link to a form to request counseling for students experiencing stress and concerns. There are links to guided relaxation, sounds and music to calm nerves as we all are feeling the effects of staying home more than we ever have before. And mindfulness activities for all ages. There are yoga lessons, a link to a virtual journal, information about exercise and wellness. There are fun links for children like animal cams and virtual field trips, puzzles, puzzles and games and art activities. In short, it is a gigantic resource to assist all of us as we go through these very unique times. It has not been easy, and nerves are frazzled from all the various effects. I'm proud to be part of a district that places such importance on social emotional health and coping strategies. Sorry, my daughter has something to say. On another note, negotiations started yesterday, and we are happy, oh my gosh, she never does this. On another note, negotiations started yesterday, and we are happy to be back at the table. We all look forward to positively strengthening our contract. Hopefully, with upcoming school board elections and Dr. Mitchell at our helm, we will enter a new age of transparency and cooperation. There are still, gosh, there are still concerns among teachers. Oh my gosh. Beth? Can you take cocoa, please? She can't hear me, I'm sorry. There are still concerns among teachers, and the amount of spending our board is doing on things that do not allow, augment our students' experience. Some of the spending in the past month raises red flags as friends of friends of one of our board members were paid a very expensive subscription for a learning system that quite honestly should have belonged to us from the beginning as it was conceived of and developed with our staff during hours that they worked here in the Atlanta School District. To say nothing of the fact that we have multiple resources that do the same thing, and teachers did not elect to use a particular math learning resource. These are issues that we hope the upcoming election will improve. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, there's Chris.
No, that is the only comment we have for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Um, moving to item four, adoption of the minutes. 4.01, we need a motion to approve the board minutes as written and order filled, the regular board meeting of October 6th, 2020. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes for October 27th.
Trustee La French, moved. Is there a second?
Second, Akis.
Trustee Akis, second. If there's no discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee Akis.
Aye.
Trustee Heinz.
Trustee Heinz, aye.
Trustee La French.
Trustee La French, aye.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Motion carries five zero. 5.01. Uh, item five, consent agenda. 5.01, uh, wave reading and full of all resolutions being considered on the public agenda and deem each as having been read by title. Um.
So Madam President, you're going to be taking item 5.02 all the way through 521?
Yes.
And then if any trustees want to pull an item, they're more than welcome to do that now.
Thank you. Does any trustee want to pull items?
Um, I would like to pull 5.05 just for a discussion.
5.05. And that was Trustee Turner. All right, hearing none other, um, we will need a motion to approve 5.01 through 5.21. Minus 5.05.
Akis, my motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Uh, Benz, sec- second.
Hey. Any further discussion? We'll call for the vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee Akis.
Aye.
Trustee Heinz.
Heinz, aye.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item six, items removed from the consent agenda. We will, um, I need a motion for 5.05 to, we'll open the discussion, I'm sorry.
Trustee Turner, I approve 5.05.
Akis, five second.
Hey. And we're now open for a discussion.
I really didn't have any concerns on this. I was just really happy that, um, you know, we're providing these classes, uh, for our parents. I know it's a trying time in our community right now. And could someone give me some information on these classes? Because they sound really exciting. Do anyone have any information? Uh, Dr. Mitchell? Dr. Williams?
Yes, Trustee Turner, we'll be providing 24 hours of English as a Second Language coursework for our parents and paying for it out of our Title I Parent Involvement Funds, uh, it's all close to $10,000. Uh, this is pretty typical for districts to provide, um, instruction in English for our parents. We believe this supports, um, student achievement because our, our, our parents are learning, uh, the language and being able to better support their children. And the classes will be held virtually, as, as you know, uh, we can't do it in person.
Right, I, I saw somewhere on mental health issues, um, that, is that the kids' PAC program or is this this one?
Yeah, it's not, yeah, it's. Yeah, it's not this, it's not this one.
Okay, okay. So this is just for our English language learner parents, or can any parent?
Yeah, ESL is available to any of our parents.
Okay, okay. And that's all I have. And it's only 24 hours. It will be.
But we certainly can renew it, uh, once we expand it. We're going to see what kind of, um, you know, attention that we get and draw from our parents, and we, we can renew it anytime.
Okay, okay. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
We'll call for the vote.
Trustee Ben.
Benz, aye.
Akis. Aye.
Trustee Heinz.
Trustee Heinz, aye.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item seven, new business, uh, 7.01, approved resolution 20.21.08. Board compensation for missed meetings. Do we have a motion?
I move to, to, uh, approve.
Trustee Benz, and is there a second?
Akis, five second.
We have a second by Trustee Akis. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Akis.
Aye.
Trustee Heinz.
Heinz, aye.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Okay, the motion carries five zero. Um, item eight, policy introductions, updates, and readings. 8.01, adopt and approve second reading of BP 9270 and Exhibit 927. Need a motion to approve?
Akis, my motion.
Second.
Uh, Benz, I set second.
We have a second by Benz. If there's no discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee Akis.
Aye.
Trustee Heinz.
Heinz, aye.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Motion carries five zero. 8.0, adopt, approve the second reading for board policy and administrative regulations 6173.1. Education for. Do we have a motion to approve?
I motion to approve, Akis.
Trustee Akis, is there a second?
Benz, I set second.
If there's no discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee Akis.
Aye.
Trustee Heinz.
Heinz, aye.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Motion carries five zero. 8.03, adopt and approve first reading for board policy and administrative regulation 6174. Education for English language learners. Do we have a motion to approve?
Trustee Turner, I motion, we approve board policy 6174.
Akis, five second.
Thank you. If there's no discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee Akis.
Aye.
Trustee Heinz.
Heinz, aye.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Okay, and carries five zero. Item nine, superintendent's report. We'll turn it over to you, Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you so much, Madam President and, and, and board members. Uh, been a busy, uh, few weeks since our last board meeting. Just wanted to just run down a whole bunch of great news, um, in relation to our district. First one is, uh, we're doing a technology upgrade for El Mirage School. Uh, we've, we've found that, but we are upgrading the internet at El Mirage from a 100 megabyte system using outdated DFO lines to a new fiber optic, one gig connection that will help increase speeds and reliability. The increased speeds will help staff and students to, uh, in digital learning once we're back, as well as, uh, currently now. So, we're upgrading those systems now, and so staff and students should see a, 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 a big difference in their internet connectivity in that area. We are also purchasing two storage containers to place behind the district office to store, uh, our PPE equipment. Happy to report that, uh, we've ordered 15 contactless temperature kiosks. Those are, those are the kiosks that you just kind of walk through, and it, and it gives you a temperature so that we reduce staff exposure by taking temperature. Uh, we've, uh, ordered additional 2,000, uh, PPE kits for, for use for our staff. Uh, 8,500 student Plexiglas desk barriers and 30 electrostatic sprayers for use by our custodians. These sprayers allow us to sanitize rooms in very quick times. Um, and the spray adheres to most surfaces and guarantees that we're, we're keeping our teachers and, and children safe if and when we do return to, to campus. Board, also happy to report that we'll take, um, we'll take possession of a third electric bus. Um, should be delivered either this week or, or next. Uh, it will complement the two that we have already. This is a 40-foot bus, 78-passenger electronic transit ambulatory bus. Exactly the same as the two that we have. Um, happy to, uh, happy to report that we've, uh, made some significant, um, orders as it relates to supporting our teachers and children, uh, as they engage in distance learning. So we've ordered 400 document cam- cameras for our teachers. Uh, we've ordered 6,000 headsets, uh, with earphones for our teachers and staff, for teachers and students. Now, we're finding as we do our observations board that our, the children seem to be more engaged when they have over-the-year, uh, earphones as well as microphones. When we're looking into our kiddos' eyes as they're engaging in their instruction, we, we believe it, it's engaging more. Uh, they're having high levels of student engagement, and so we've ordered over-the-year, um, uh, over-the-year microphones and headsets for all of our kids and staff. Um, we are upgrading the district's, uh, phone systems. We're about probably five or six, uh, cycles, uh, too old, so we're, we're doing that now. Um, we've also ordered upgrading our switches, um, for our district to, uh, uh, manage our internet much, much faster. Uh, let's see, what else? We've just finished programming over 1,500 laptops, uh, part of the 1,600 that we received free from the state, and so we'll be ready to distribute those laptops to staff real soon. I'm also happy to report that all of our teachers for next quarter will be using ARI's gradebook. Uh, it'll be the first time our district grades, uh, ARI's gradebook will allow our parents to access, uh, their children's attendance and grades, and so we're really pushing that is not, not only to, uh, we know that when parents, uh, can see the daily habits of their children in terms of missing assignments or, or quizzes, test scores, that we actually empower parents to help us help their children. And so we're happy to launch fully to put all of our grades onto ARI's gradebook, and so we, we're still working out some kinks. Um, met with staff today, and they talked about some challenges with, for SEC grading practices and some other pieces, and so we'll work those things out as they occur and, um, but just happy to report that we're moving in that direction in support of our parents. I'm happy to report, uh, on October 12th, we had a great professional development day. I echo, uh, Ms. Radar's sentiments. That was a very highly successful day. We had over 300 teachers attend. Um, and they've indicated that the content was rigorous and engaging, and they enjoyed the keynote speaker. So thank you, board, for, for approving that day and, and having, uh, giving us more time to spend in developing ourselves as teachers and leaders. I'm happy to report that, uh, uh, Dr. Dr. Williams' leadership, we just completed our FPM, our federal program monitoring. Uh, we got, we, we ended with a few findings, uh, but there are opportunities for us to get better and strengthen our system. But overall, um, the FBI, FPM group gave us, um, a lot of compliments about the systems and our staff. And so some of the things that they, that they found, we are correcting, and there's nothing insurmountable. Um, and so, uh, board, I'll be giving you a full report, uh, in terms of the findings and the corrective actions that we'll put into place to ensure that we won't lose those findings going forward. We're also happy to report, board, that, um, Dr. Williams has, uh, trans- transitioned our school, uh, school plans. Um, you'll be seeing, um, executive summaries of the school plans, also using like infographic type stuff, so that way, um, you're able to read those plans and get the highlights of those plans without looking through each page of the 100-plus-page plans. Uh, but still, we'll have those available for you as well. Um, and then in terms of COVID, board, uh, it looks like the county is trending down, uh, quite, uh, just a, a little bit. We're still over in terms of our cases per 100,000. The county is currently sitting, uh, as of today, at 10.6. As you know, you have to be eight and lower to return to, um, regular school. Our district is at a 16. So we're having 16 cases per 100,000. The rest of the county is at 10.6. Just wanted to keep you abreast of where we are with COVID. And also, um, board, as you know, uh, we enacted plans last week, uh, to reduce staff exposure and ask, uh, and try to get as much of our staff working from home to keep them safe. Our principals have been hugely helpful with that and have helped us significantly reduce the amount of, of, uh, adults on campus during the day to reduce exposure to COVID. We're hoping, we're, we're, we're going to enact those plans through, uh, Thanksgiving holidays, so through the 20th of, of November to get our folks, um, home and safe for, for the holidays. And we're hoping that through the holidays, we're, we'll see some trending down so that we may, uh, we might start, uh, begin to be in a position to consider, uh, returning to school. And so with that, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to item 10, governing board members' reports and announcements.
Doug, President Heinz, could you go back to Dr. Mitchell for a moment?
Oh, sure.
Dr. Mitchell, what is the enrollment for the district and district learning?
Um, the enrollment, uh, the last time I looked, we're, we're close to 8,000, but I certainly can get those numbers and be more accurate with, when I get a chance to go into the office, yes. The last time I looked, probably about a week ago, uh, we're, we're tipping right at 8,000.
Okay, so in terms of our distant learning, i- is that 8,000, or we have enrollment 8,000? So there, there should be two numbers, right?
So you're asking enrollment, our enrollment is about 8,000. Our attendance is probably 91, 92.
92% of that?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, thank you. Um, item 10, governing board members' reports and announcements. Um, I'll turn over to, to, uh, Trustee La French.
Oh, thank you. I go first. Thank you. Um, I just wanted to, um, say, um, that I wanted the teachings, the teachers to know that how essential that they are, that they may not be called essential workers, but to their students, they are essential. I wanted to also let them know that how important they are and how their safety is very important. And going forward, because of the numbers that are moving, um, the way they are, that, you know, that we should take social distancing very serious, and if you can work from home, you know, like Dr. Mitchell just said, that is a great idea. You want to stay safe. The holidays are coming, and, um, I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Trustee Akis.
Hi, good evening. Uh, first of all, I wanted to say, um, um, thank you to Beth. Uh, from what I understand, the new wellness program is very liked and appreciated by many people. And that's so nice to hear all the wonderful comments about that. So again, thank you, Beth, for putting that together and just for the district having this as a resource for everyone. Uh, my last comment is, and I do apologize for being late to the meeting. Um, I've gotten several emails, phone calls, lots of hysteria within the last half hour. Uh, from what I understand, um, well, I'll, I'll just make this, this comment. Uh, we do have an election next week, and I'd like to make a public statement on record that the school districts or board members, um, do not endorse anyone running for this election. And I understand that there is, uh, comments posted on several social media sites in the city, and I felt that it needed to be clarified, uh, the, the misleading information that's out there, um, that I just need to come out and just let everybody know and kind of squash that, that rumor. Uh, we are not endorsing anybody. School districts do not do that. We don't get political. Um, it is not our place or our business to be involved in elections. So if anybody out there heard anything, saw anything, um, I will be, uh, sending the superintendent the social media sites that I understand that this is being advertised on. Um, and we'll just try to do the best we can to clarify that once again, we are not endorsing anybody who's running for a city seat or, or any type of, uh, you know, seat at all in this election. And so having said that, I, I hope people understood me, and I hope I clarified anything. And if not, you know, please, you know, let the district know, uh, you know, if you need further explanation. Um, again, just wanted to clarify this and kind of end that rumor or whatever's being. Um, again, just wanted to clarify this and kind of end that rumor or whatever's being said out there. Um, other than that, I agree with Ms. French. The teachers are doing a great job. I really don't know how they're doing it, but they're getting it done. Um, I know it's very difficult. It's very depressing. It's, it's hard. But, you know, at least you're getting it done somehow, some way. And I, you know, thank you for that. You know, I understand the janitors are working very hard. Um, lots of people are just really, really working hard and this just isn't an easy thing. And I'm, I'm sure it's just very difficult for many people. Um, so, eh, having said that, uh, this is a nice meeting. It's, it's really quick. But, um, I just want to thank everybody. I miss everybody. I miss seeing everybody's faces. But, um, it's just a sign of the times and, and, you know, hopefully we'll all get through it. So anyway, I'm done and thank you again. And, uh, I hope everybody has a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Turner.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell, for your comments, um, uh, your superintendent comments. Again, I just want to say that we appreciate all of your hard work. Um, I know you've been busy since, uh, July first. And I appreciate everything that you've done so far for the district and I look forward to, um, seeing your, your great work over the years, even if, you know, I'm not here sitting in this seat. You know, I do have kids in the district. So thank you so much for, uh, coming on board and, you know, just take off running. I really appreciate that.
Thank you so much. It's been my honor. Thank you.
Um, I would like to say that, um, I witnessed the food drop-off on Monday. And I know that, uh, C N S changed protocols on how they're delivering the food for the parents, the weekly delivery. And I was really impressed, uh, with, you know, with the new protocol. And it was touchless delivery and, and it, it was, it was a little long because of, um, the parent had to get out of their car. But the way it was set up, it was really, it ran really smooth from what I saw. Um, second, I would like to say that I attended, uh, the la- the three meetings last week with supper with the superintendent. And from what I saw the participants, it was a great turnout and I was really impressed with that. Um, there weren't that many questions. But I guess, you know, as these meetings go along, the parents are gonna have questions that they're gonna bring to the table. I know it's a difficult time doing distant learning. So, you know, we're all in this together. Probably wondering what can I ask? Do they know? But if you have any, any, any concerns, parents, please, by all means, let us know because there are resources out there to help you. And again, Beth did a, a tremendous, a fabulous da- job with her presentation and her wellness center and, uh, what they're offering there, please, there's a lot of resources for you. You know, if you're, if, even if it's not school-related. You know, if you're having difficulties at home, please reach out to us. That's what we're here for. And if we don't know, we'll get you the resources. That, we will definitely do that. Um, on Saturday, I had the opportunity to attend, um, the backpack giveaway that was put on by the city of Adelanto. Um, I went, I personally went and it was amazing. It was absolutely amazing. It was very well organized. The parents drove up in their cars with their children. They were given a food box. They were given a backpack with toys in it. And they had a special guest, Paul Pierce, was there. And I could tell you, I can actually tell you the smiles on the kids' faces. It was just heartwarming. And, you know, to see frustration on children's face, I, I ca- I would like to see how many children that attended that event got in front of the Zoom this morning with a smile on their face. If they were asked, how was your weekend? Cause i- it brought a smile to my face. It warmed my heart. And I just would like to say that I appreciate, uh, Mayor, Mayor Reyes, you know, for, eh, and he also attended the supper with the superintendent. And he gave the invitation and we had teachers there. We had, um, election candidates there that was running. And so it turned out really, really well. There was no politicking. There was no campaign politicking or any of that. It was for the kids. And sometime, as adults, we get ahead of ourselves and we have to understand what we do at a school district. It's about our kids. First and foremost, it's about our kids. Because if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't be here. So we have, sometimes we have to take adult issues out of kids' things and let, let the kids have fun. And that's what I saw. Smile on kids' faces. Third, I would like to say, um, I would like to comment on what trustee Echus said about candidates endorsing other candidates. I, 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 I don't see anywhere where there's written that saying that you cannot endorse a candidate running. I have to vote. And so I can look at what a candidate offer and I can endorse a candidate if I like. If there's some literature or if there's some regulations that state that we cannot do that, then I would like to see that because I do know for a fact that over the years there have been candidates endorsing other candidates. And, and trustee Echus, your son ran two years ago for city council.
I know, I'm gonna have to rebuttal what you're saying.
I'm talking. And so, um, we know that unless there's some ordinance that says that cannot happen, I would like to see it. Um, I have, I, you know, I, I am on social media and I know that people are endorsing me. And so I have endorsed other candidates. And another statement was made about board member's spending. You know, some of the allegations geared on unethical behavior. And I don't know anyone on this board that has engaged in that. And so, um, I'll just leave that right there. But again, you know, um, I know, thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Thank you, uh, for giving us the COVID updates and keeping us informed on that because that's really important. Especially when we're talking about reopening our schools. You know, we, we can't do that until it's safe for our children to return, our teachers to return, our staff to return. It's very volatile out there right now. So, um, the holidays are coming up. Everyone be safe. I know that, um, ho- ho- Thanksgiving is a special day for me because I have quite a few people in my home. This year is gonna be different. So, uh, just everyone be safe. Continue to wear your mask, continue to social distance, continue to, um, wash hands and look out for one another because we're in this together. Eh, we're human race and we all bleed red. And so we all have to be careful and mindful of each other and their feelings as well. And so that's all I have. Thank you.
Trustee Benz.
Uh, thank you. So I too went to the backpack gi- giveaway. And it, it was nice. They also had the assense census there, trying to give the information on the cen- census. And if you have not done the cen- census, please do, 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 do so because it is important. It will help wi- with fund, fun- funding for, you know, serve services that, that our town needs. Um, Paul, Paul Pierce, what was there? He's a tall dude. He's, he's really tall. I, you know, you, you hear the num- num- numbers of how tall they are, but until they're actually standing ne- next to you and they may make you look so, so short, it's like, holy cow. Um, but it, it was great to see students there, kids there. The parent, parents were all excited, excited. There were some te- teachers there, like just live streaming, trying, trying, trying to say, come, come on down there. There was the free phone serv- ser- service there. So there were things there to help fam- fam- families of our air- area. And, and, and I was glad that, that I was a- able to go. Um, and I'm just gonna say, just keep, keep truck, truckin', hang in there. You know, I'm in my classroom. I'm con- constantly trying, trying to think ways that I can hel- help the kids, but yet not o- overwhelm my, myself. You know, we can't do things the way we u- used to do. And I'm like, ah, it's frustrating. So we have to learn new ways, which that's frustrating too. So just give yourself grace, give the kids grace and give your coworker, or wo- workers grace, cause we all need, need it. And, um, please take, ta- take care, care of yourselves. Fall, follow the guidelines and just be, be safe. And that's it.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to, again, thank Dr. Mitchell for his forward thinking, um, being proactive in keeping the safety of our staff and everyone at the forefront of all the decisions that have to be made concerning movement in our district right now. Um, I'm excited about all of the, um, awesome things that are happening, even in the midst of this time of COVID and, um, a different school year, something we've never experienced before. And so where I see teachers, staff, um, administrators just plotting it out as we go along. And it's kind of like walking in the dark, but we're figuring it out and we're following the light. So I am excited. I have hope for, you know, just the rest of the school year. Um, I was glad to hear about the over-the-ear headsets coming. Um, I actually experienced that with my three little ones. And having five students in the house doing distant learning, sometimes in the same room, those headsets come in handy. So I'm excited uh, that all students will have access to that. And, um, I just, I just feel that, you know, we have hope. We have to just keep pressing in and, uh, moving forward. Our children are settling in. Uh, it's, it's new, but they're so flexible. They just have such resiliency. I ju- that's what I see in our kids. The, as I come across, um, parents and they're sharing, it's just amazing how the students are transitioning. They're transitioning. And they're learning. And that's what's important. So I want to thank everyone, uh, for, you know, all of the hard work and, and how we continue to just press in and, and, uh, continue to be there for our scholars. Okay, with that, we'll move to item eleven, uh, eleven point oh one. I need a motion to adjourn.
Echus, my motion.
Thank you, trustee Echus. Is there a second?
Benz, I second.
I second.
Okay, I got trustee Benz, second. If there's no further discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee Echus.
Aye.
Trustee Hines.
Aye.
Trustee LaFrance.
LaFrance, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Motion carries five zero. It's adjourned. Good evening, ev-
Madam President, the time is six fifteen P M.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.